Okay, I think we've got a number of colleagues who've joined us. So welcome. Just do some quick introduction. So I'm Gordon McFarlane, HR Director in Newham and member of the PMA Board. And I'll facilitate today's session. We're joined by colleagues from Manchester City Council, who will introduce themselves in a second. And this is one of a series of webinars. We do webinars all year round, as you know. And we've got a particular series on award entries and award winners, and we have some winners with us. The best OD programme, more to be revealed about that. So the session will be up to 45 minutes. We may not need all the time, but up to 45 minutes. What it suggests is, because we've got a number of people on the call, if you have thoughts, comments, questions, put them into the chat. And then if we have time, we can open up for Q and A. And I can either pick up themes out of the chat or invite people to, you know, ask questions before we finish. We'll be recording and the webinar will be available afterwards for those who aren't on it to be able to view. So I don't think I need to say any more for now. Can I just hand over to my colleagues to introduce themselves?
Hi everyone. So my name is Oh, can you hear me? Yep. My name is Suzanne Grumshaw, and I'm the Strategic Head of Organisation Development and Transformation here at Manchester Council. I'm joined today by two colleagues who will let introduce themselves. I'm absolutely delighted to be able to talk you through the work that we've been doing on our staff survey, and that led us to winning the best organisation development programme at the awards this year. So I'll hand over to Ruth.
Hello, everybody. My name's Ruth Robinson. I'm the Organisation Development Manager here at Manchester. And the staff survey is a programme that the OD team lead on here in Manchester. So nice to meet you all this afternoon.
Hi, everybody. I hope you can hear me. My name is Anne-Marie Ruffneen, and I'm the Organisation Development Lead here at Manchester City Council. And my role is exactly that. It's about OD, it's about focusing on people, and it's about putting them at the heart of absolutely everything that we do. Because when we do that, we absolutely build stronger and more connected teams. And so thinking about that, and thinking about the staff survey, this is my favourite piece of work. So I am absolutely thrilled to be taking you through this today. I feel it's an absolute privilege to be able to do this work. So saying them all, let's move on. So in terms of welcoming you. I'm absolutely thrilled that you can join us today. During this webinar, I'm going to take you through our journey, and it really has been a journey of, you know, evolving and change. I'll take you through how it started, what we've learned, and how it's helping us shape a better and more inclusive workplace. So in true OD style, this is a story of risk, of trust, of change, of all of those things. And we're so proud to be able to share it with you today. So that being said, can I have the next slide, please? So before we get started, let me just give you a little bit of context. Manchester City Council is a North West local authority, and we employ over 8,000 people. We deliver 157 services to over 635,000 residents. So our reach is quite wide. We employ over 1,700 line managers with half of our line managers managing between one and five people, and the other half of those managing over six people up to, you know, 20 plus. And over 800 of our staff are still digitally offline or harder to reach, as we would call them. So we have got a real mixed bag of connections and of reach. So it's really important that the work that we've done around survey connects to everybody. Next slide, please. So exactly as it says on the tent, we are taking a risk in 2022. We moved away from outsourcing our annual staff survey, and we brought it in-house for the very first time. So can we go to the next slide, please? So in terms of that, let me just take you back a little bit. So let's rewind to 2020. During COVID, we ran a really small check-in with our people just to see how they're coping. And what we heard was really powerful, and it absolutely reminded us how important it is to listen and to listen properly. So in 2022, we took the leap. We moved away from outsourcing the annual survey, and we brought it in-house for the very first time. And we felt like this was a really bold move, but we believed that our people and our ability, in our, in our ability to really do this well. We wanted flexibility. We wanted flexibility to ask the questions that really mattered to us, and in a way that felt right to our people. We didn't want a tick box exercise. We wanted a catalyst for change and cultural change as well, and we trusted our people to make that happen. Next slide, please. And so what we had to do was we had to set out some principles. So when we design and deliver our survey, there's a core set of guiding principles that we stick to. Can I have the next slide, please? So our principles, these are the absolute backbone of how we operate our survey. So when we brought it in-house, we knew that it wasn't just about asking questions. We wanted it to be about asking the right questions and in the right way. And that's why we built this set of guiding principles, because we need them to shape everything that we do. So first and foremost, we only ask questions that we can do something about. If we can't act on the insights that we're being told, then it feels tokenistic. There's no point. So every question is there, and it's there for a reason. We're really clear on what we're trying to achieve by asking that question. We're also not trying to do everything at once. It's really tempting to try and ask everything that we want to know the answer to in one go. But we've learnt that we need to stay focused. So targeting questions, it just leads to clearer answers and more meaningful action, and people can really see things evolving. We sense check everything that we do. So we sense check questions with staff. So we don't just write them in isolation. We test the tone, we test the language, we test the intent. So we need to ask a question before we've asked any questions about, you know, what do people think that we're trying to get from asking these questions? So we do that reach out in advance of asking the survey questions. And based on what people tell us, we adjust what we're going to ask so that people can really hear what they need to hear and answer honestly. We've made deliberate choices about responses and the options that we give people. So recently, last few years, we removed the middle ground option of neither agree or disagree, because it often is masking uncertainty or disengagement. But we didn't stop there. We added, and you know, ultimately, I don't know. So when people don't know an answer, they can be absolutely truthful, and that then allows us to shape where we go with that information. We've made sure that the survey is accessible to everybody. So there are always three ways to complete it. So we have an online survey. We have a paper survey, and we've got a dedicated phone line. So nobody feels excluded. And we take anonymity really seriously, and we apply something called the less than 10 rule. So if services have less than 10 responses. Or sorry, if we have less than 10 responses in a service, we just don't share the results because there's a danger that people could be identified, and that really leads into that anonymity. And that's solid information that we're sharing to tell people this is anonymous, and you can trust what we're saying. And we never share any free text comments. So we always give the opportunity for people to tell us anything else. But we only summarise that information and we share themes rather than specific comments. And also, which is very important, is the survey isn't mandatory. So we're not forcing anyone to, to, you know, complete it. We really do encourage participation, and we want to hear from as many people as possible. But we also, we respect choice. And if people don't want to do it, that's fine as well. We're really clear about who owns the actions. Staff surveys really do require shared ownership. Everybody needs to know what happens next and who's responsible for making that happen. So that's why the principles absolutely guide everything that we do, and we stick to those religiously. Can I have the next slide, please? So asking the right questions, and sometimes they're not always easy. So we don't just ask questions that we want to ask, we ask the questions that staff want to answer. Next slide, please. So at the start of each survey season, we establish what the focus is going to be. And in 2024, the purpose of the survey that year was to understand how staff are feeling at that moment, which always forms part of what we're doing, because we need to understand that snapshot in time. But in addition to this, we are looking to understand, and we're looking to understand the impact of the work that we do around EDI and wellbeing. We were looking to understand opportunities for development and progression, and also experiences of discrimination at work. So the next slide, please. And alongside all of those key things and the purpose of that, in 2024, for the first time, we, we decided to include something called dynamic questioning. And that means that, you know, if somebody answered a particular way to a particular question, we could dig that bit deeper. So in that instance, we wanted to better understand why people might want to leave the organisation. And these responses gave us real insight into what drives people to look elsewhere. And that really helped us to focus on areas that matter most for retaining talented staff. We, we asked more in-depth questions about whether staff felt they really did have opportunities to develop and progress. More questions around that. And we also asked questions to understand how staff were feeling heard and valued. Now, these questions came in light of staff feedback from historical surveys. And on top of all of that, we really did want to drill down and understand why. And if staff had experienced or witnessed discrimination in the workplace, and whether that was from colleagues, whether that was from service users or members of the public. Now, we absolutely recognise that that's not an easy question to ask and answer, but it is essential if we're really serious about inclusion. So the responses to that discrimination question set weren't shared with services directly. What that formed part of was with senior management action plan. So overall, that information that we've asked is driving real change within this organisation. Can I have the next slide, please? So staff shaping that survey. They absolutely do, and they do that from start to finish. Next slide, please. So engagement. Engagement for me and for us as a city council in Manchester, it isn't part of, it isn't just part of our staff survey, it is absolutely the foundation of it. So from the very beginning, we've understood that if we want honest, meaningful feedback, we need to build trust. And trust isn't something that happens, you know, just by turning up once a year. It's something that we earn through consistent and thoughtful engagement. We really do start by listening to our critical friends. So those colleagues that help shape those initial questions through language and tone are essential. And meeting them and putting their voices into action at the very beginning is essential. Their input ensures that when we ask questions, it really does feel relevant, people feel respected, and it's really clear for everybody. We've made it a priority to target those silent voices. So pockets of staff and groups of staff who traditionally haven't participated in the survey. We've, we've made those services and those, those teams an absolute priority. But we haven't just sent out links and hoped for the best. We've gone and met them, you know, on their terms. And I've been out to crematoriums, I've been in school halls, I've been in community hubs, meeting people where they are and hearing directly from them has been a real game changer. We spent time myth busting with them, opening conversations up to really understand their concerns, what they feel the barriers are. Especially around anonymity. As I said before, we worked really hard around that to build that into everything. But with their feedback and understanding what their challenges are, that's led to real change. So these conversations have really helped us understand their misconceptions and address their concerns directly. You know, on their terms, and that has built real trust between services and teams. And we really do make sure to spotlight successes. So we share real examples of how staff feedback has driven change. For example, we have something called the Good Managers Guide. We link into our talent plans with progression. And, you know, the information people share with us about wanting to progress. We've got tailored wellbeing offers. All of this information shared through our forms, through our newsletters, through any, anything possible to really spotlight and showcase what it is that we're doing and how these voices are absolutely equipping us to make change. But through all of this, we're really maintaining a strong sense of purpose. We're constantly reminding people why their voice matters, because their response will help shape a better workplace. I'll just pull an example out. We've got work that we've done with our home-to-school transport teams. They are a service that transport our vulnerable children to and from school. And in 2022, we received just 10 responses from them, but with continued engagement, with real connection with those services. Last year, we got over 150 responses, which has meant that that service can really shape the next year moving forward. Based on real insights, based on what their staff are telling them, and based on, you know, key things that need to change. So for us, that's not just a number. It's a sign of trust. It's proof that when we're listening and we show that we care about what people want to say, people respond honestly. This kind of engagement, it isn't something that happens, you know, once in a blue moon. It takes real consistent approach. But it's absolutely worth it, because with more of that meaningful engagement and opportunities, we're creating a space where we can learn from people and change for the better. I love saying, you know, when we learn from people, we grow, and then when we grow, we're better placed to support the workforce. And people hopefully feel in that, and we're seeing that in our response rates. Can I have the next slide, please? So this is just a snapshot of what we've been talking about and how that information has shaped that growth. So in 2024, we had over 5,500 staff taking part in the survey, and that was nearly 70%, which was amazing, absolutely amazing. And that's up from 36% in 2020. So in a very short period of time, we've seen, you know, massive growth and massive connection with our people. But we've also seen those paper responses growing too. And for me, that showcasing and showing that we're reaching more of our offline and harder-to-reach colleagues that weren't engaged at all in the first place. And that is through that consistent and continued engagement. And just for context, most councils average around 50%. So we really do feel like we're getting something right with, with the work that we're doing. So I suppose that decision that we made to go in-house is absolutely paying off, because we're doing the right things for the right, for the right reasons. Next slide, please. So this is just for visual impact, and I just thought some of these numbers absolutely showcase some of the things that we're doing, and we're doing really well. So 93% of staff are telling us that they feel proud to work here. 87% are feeling well supported, but it also highlights that there are other things that we need to do as well. So we don't shy away from where people tell us we've got work to do. Can I have the next slide, please? But getting all that data, that's just the beginning. And we're using that data to absolutely share insights. And we've created through something called Power BI. I'm not sure if anyone's heard of that before. It was brand new to us last year, and we went ahead and created over 117 bespoke dashboards for our services. And we grouped that information into six themes. These dashboards have been an absolute game changer. They've helped managers really see what's working. It's allowing them to spot trends and identify areas for improvement really, really quickly. And we've made it easier for us to compare year-on-year results across services and directories. But this isn't just about reporting on data, it's about enabling action. And if we can see what's happening in a clear format, we can act on it. And the feedback from managers and heads of service has been absolutely fantastic. They can see what they need to do, and they can get on with doing it. And we've turned all of this around really quickly. So our survey runs from mid-October to mid-November, and everybody had packs before Christmas. So for the first time, people had completed the survey and were seeing results before Christmas, which was an absolute step forward for us in terms of transparency and responsiveness. Next slide, please. And again, just to showcase all of the things that the staff survey touches. These are just a few examples of how we use the data and the information that staff are telling us to shape the work that we do. When colleagues told us that they wanted better health and wellbeing support, we really listened and acted. When feedback pointed to clear expectations around management, it helped us shape something called the Good Managers Guide, giving managers seven basics of line management. So what staff are telling us is powerful, but we don't take that lightly. As I said before, this work is an absolute privilege to deliver. And part of that privilege is making sure that we reflect that sentiment back to the workforce, whether that is through those newsletters, staff events, engagement days, or just everyday conversations. We're taking every opportunity to show that we're listening and that every voice matters and is reaching lots of different things that affects people every day. Next slide, please. So that's our story. Our staff survey is absolutely built with care. It's driven by purpose, and it's guided by those principles. And it's always shaped on the voices of our staff. We really did take a risk in 2022. But as I've said a couple of times, we really do feel like it paid off. We're really proud that what we've built. We're even prouder of the trust our people have in, have placed in us to deliver this. This journey is ongoing. We, you know, make no mistake, we know that. But we are absolutely committed to learning, to improving, and to growing year-on-year. But we're doing that together. So thank you so much for listening. I hope you feel the sentiment, and I hope you feel the passion that we have, we have for the staff survey. It really is something that is at the heart of everything that we do. But we'd also love to hear your questions or reflections on what we've shared. So thank you.
Anne-Marie, thank you. It's been really helpful, really interesting set of slides and supporting data. This is just a great story. I've got a couple of questions, but there's a couple in the chat, and I was interested in this as well. Clive's just asking how many respondents used the phone line to respond to the survey, because that's not something I've come across before either, using a phone line. So did that work?
I, I took three phone calls last year. It's very, very few. I can't speak about years before, but for me, the three calls that I took were off the back of some of those engagement sessions that we'd had with our harder-to-reach staff, who were unavailable that day for whatever reason. So we'd mentioned about the different options. But it's, it's been available for every year that we run the survey. But last year, that's the data that I can give you.
Okay, that's, that's helpful. It's just another option if all else fails type of thing. Yeah. And again, Dawn's asking, and I'm sure you do this, but you collect demographic information and does that sort of, because I saw, I saw you had EDI up on a slide. So I'm just wondering.
Yes, we do collect that information.
Can I jump in on the back of that? Because I think this is a really important part. So it was also one of the driving reasons why we moved away from an external provider. Because what we had been able to do in COVID is to be able to collect some more of that sort of equality monitoring to, to understand the extent to which people's experiences differed across the organisation. And for anybody who has been involved or knows anything about our EDI journey, we were part of Race Review in 2020, which was a huge piece of work that has really driven our workforce qualities approach over the last few years. So actually being able to drill down and really understand that insight now as an organisation, and I'm sure you're all the same. You will do consultations. There'll be lots of external, whether it's highways, whether it's consulting or strategies and things like that. And so we have a formal set of equality monitoring standards, and they're the standards that we use for the survey. Obviously, in terms of what Anne-Marie was saying earlier, that we do have really strict anonymity rules. So obviously, depending on the levels that we draw down to, it means that some information won't be provided. But at an organisational level, we do look at things like disability, ethnicity, sex, gender. In recent years, we have expanded because people have wanted to share things like whether they are going through menopause or they are either going through treatment for things like cancer, whether they have caring responsibilities, all of these. Whether they may not necessarily draw down to a directorate or service level, but at a corporate level, are helping us to provide that insight. And that really supports things for staff networks, in particular supports our equality and our workforce qualities work as well.
Yeah, it's really helpful. I'm just going to ask a quick question for me, then come back to another one in the, in the chat. And I was just thinking as you went through, because you, you engage the workforce and you kind of tailor the, you know, the survey. How, how does that work in terms of benchmarking year to year? Do you have a set of standard questions that you can then benchmark and you can see? And then you have some specific ones year on year?
I can come in on this and then Ruth and Marie. So yeah, we have a standard set of questions that are for you, and then we do have some that tweet. But where we've tried to move towards, in some cases, is more sentiment analysis, which then moves away from direct comparison of questions. So a number of questions are helping us to understand the extent to which staff feel well supported in the organisation. And staff feel that they are well managed, managers feel that they're supported, and people feel a sense of belonging in the organisation. So we have moved to a place where we're starting to group these questions, which gives us the freedom and flexibility to be able to tweak some of the wording.
And you still get benchmarking, yeah.
Yeah, I think that just on this, there is a really good question, and I'm going to try and do this as good a justice as Anne-Marie does when she describes it. There's a question that we used to ask that was, I feel that I can voice an opinion without fear of negative consequences. And it was a question that always scored quite low, you know, always had quite a lot of negative sentiment.
It's a psychological safety element.
Yeah, yeah. But then through engagement, what we started to learn was people interpreted that question in so many different ways. And almost two parts to the question, can you voice an opinion? Do you feel confident, comfortable to have the space to be able to do that? And do you feel that that voice is heard? Actually, that's an example of where actually through those conversations, people, and we would learn that because we would, we play back all the time. We're saying to people, you told us this, so we're doing this. You told us that you want more support to be a good manager. So we've introduced in this, and it's that constant link back. That's a really good example of where we then split the question out. And the question is now, you know, do you feel confident in being able to have a voice? Do you feel that your voice is heard? I can't remember the exact wording, but just to be able to try to.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's great. I'm just going to pick up, there's a little bit more in the chat. There's a couple of linked, but maybe slightly different questions in the chat. So one is about how you know who the silent voices are and, and what approach, or what's the successful ways to get them to complete the survey? And then another one from Wesley, which again is maybe similar, but overcoming challenges and barriers with engaging with frontline staff to, to again, get them to be engaged. So they're kind of related, I think, those.
They are, they are very related. So the silent voices, I suppose, when I started looking at the survey, we, we get, we've got an amazing wonderful relationship with our data colleagues in, produced all of our data. And as I said at the beginning, we've got over 150 services, and what we get with that historical data are the numbers of staff that have completed the survey in those areas. So for example, in facilities management, we've got, or historically, we'd had something like 28 responses. In home-to-school transport, we'd had historically 10 responses. So I suppose what it boiled down to was seeing those very low numbers and approaching approaching their managers and saying, what can we do? How can we reach you? What does that look like for you in reality? So as I said, you know, sometimes that is that they will shut their service for the day, which, you know, it isn't all of those hardest to reach services. Services like bereavement will afford us that time to go in and do that work directly with their service. Um, but other services will allow us to meet them at six o'clock in the morning, like the cleaning staff, facilities management, they will say, well, I can get everybody together at six o'clock in the morning if you can be here, but we've got 10 locations. So we had to weigh up, you know, it, it's absolutely worth our time to go and meet at six o'clock in the morning, seven o'clock at night, whatever the ask is, in a school, at a depot, wherever, in, in a community hub, wherever is necessary or needed, it's showing up. And then it's showing up when they're holding different events as well. So not just that one-off occasion, it's right, okay, we've met you, we've met your staff, we've talked to you about the survey, we've talked about all of that myth busting. But when can we come back? When can we meet you again? What else can we help you understand? What are the things that are new in our organisation that we can shape and share with your, with your teams? And it's just going out and forging those relationships. I think, you know, ultimately what it boils down to is it takes time, it takes a real commitment to say, this is what we're going to do. And it takes listening to what's the best fit for them, for it to work, because it's a whole raft of lots of different things. One week when survey's live, I'll be stood in a crematorium, the next week I'll be, uh, in a depot with surrounded by 100 wheelers. It's whatever's necessary, it's whatever's needed to reach those services on their terms. And then once they feel that, once they hear that, once they start meeting you, they slowly but surely buy in. And it's as simple as that.
Yeah, that's, yeah, as simple as that, but a lot of hard work. But starting to, you're building up a real, really helpful picture about how you get to this really strong engagement and just remarkable 70% response rate. Um, it's, it's very, very impressive, but a lot of hard work going into it. Um, Clive makes an interesting point in the chat just around, um, national benchmarking and the LGA, yeah, had an employee engagement index, um, and just your thoughts on whether you're just looking within the city council or whether it's helpful to do, you know, beyond that and kind of the benefits or otherwise of regional or national benchmarking.
So, um, our previous provider did, um, apply some benchmarking. I think a lot of them probably, um, do. Interestingly, we were doing a large public sector organisation in that. So we were being benchmarked against private, um, organisations in the main. Um, yes, the LGA did. I think there was one that we were going, we did consider being a part of. I suppose it's about really understanding what the value is that you get from that. And I know sometimes that can be slightly selfish, because obviously sometimes you can provide value. But, um, so we're in, we're in Greater Manchester, there's Manchester and there's nine other local authorities, but we're all of a different size actually. In some cases, you, you're comparing apples and pears or apples with different types of apples, you know. So, you know, and I'm, I'm just being really, I'm being very truthful, it's not something that we have considered putting a huge amount of time and effort and investment, um, into. I'm not saying that we would necessarily rule it out because I think there are some benefits. I feel like that we get a lot of insight through sharing our experiences through things like this and being able to test the things that we're doing. Is that comparable to organisations of a similar size, who've got similar challenges, you know, particularly things like core cities or our neighbouring, um, authorities in the north, you know. So, yeah, we don't take part in any fault. We're not against, it's not that we're against it. And I suppose if we found the right one. And the other thing is sometimes there's a challenge over time scales. You know, we always do ours in the autumn, we need to do it in the autumn. We're not particularly prepared to flex on questions for the purpose of benchmarking, because actually our questions are designed to give us what we need as an organisation. And at this time of year, the amount of conversations that we're having, because people are saying, can we ask a question about this? And I want a question about this. And we're going, what are we doing? What's the problem we're trying to solve? Why do we need this? What, what are you going to do with that information? We don't ask questions just for the sake of it. And, you know, it's been quite processive, refining and everything, you know, we learn through the interventions and activities that we're doing. If there's a gap, if there's a space where we're thinking, we don't know a lot about this. How can the staff survey help us to be able to do that? Um, yeah, so I'm more than happy to have more of a conversation on this and I hope that does, um, answer your question for the moment.
That's, that's great. Thanks Suzanne. And there's just one more in the chat, which I, I think I understand. So one from Dawn around just monitoring response rates with anonymity. And I guess is how do you know you get to certain points? You know where you're targeting when it's an anonymous survey and ensuring anonymity as well. I think, hopefully Dawn have interpreted that in the right way.
Perfect. Thank you. Yes, so in completing the, so in completing the survey, people do have to tell us what service and directorate, what directorate and team that they work in. Um, we need that information because that's the information that allows directors and services to be able to use that information at a local level in terms of their responses and what it is telling them. Everybody in the organisation who is online is sent a link, they only get sent it once, once they've completed it, they don't get sent it again. Um, so they keep getting sent the same link. Does that make sense? So we will mire the you until you've completed that and then we'll stop and you'll get a text and we'll stop. Um, and then the, anybody who wants a paper survey can, the offline, um, that Anne-Marie talks about can have a copy of the paper survey. They kind of fluctuate each year, depending on you as people build their digital confidence. Um, so in the background, uh, we have performance research and intelligence team in Manchester, and they do some wizardry, I'm going to call it, because they are just like geniuses that provide then a tracking dashboard. So we're able to monitor response rates based on current deployment. So they'd be able to say, in HRODT, you have 162 people and we've had 17 responses, you know, for example, if, you know, it's ever sent it, but you get what I mean? So then we're able to use that insight to try and drive and push forward. Um, in an ideal world, so from next year, we're getting a new HR finance system. So what we are looking to do is to be able to more closely integrate those two, that, you know, the back office system so that it won't be a manual task of somebody having to analyse the data, not analyse the data, but analyse those two questions to be able to produce some tracking.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Um, we've come to the last question, so I haven't got any more. And I know a couple of people have had to drop off the, uh, drop off the call. So I think unless there's any killer points that, that you'd like to make, um, we'll call a halt there. No, okay. So let's call it. Thank you so much for your presentation and thank you everyone for engaging. Um, really interesting discussion, um, and worthy winners. We'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.